Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Draw please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay, let's move to the consent agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protem, I have one thing to bring up under business.
Okay. Moving to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Mayor Protem.
Is there a second, then we'll...
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Dockin. Councilmember Dockin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, I want to pull the Rice Hospital Board minutes of January 8th.
Okay, Councilmember DeBleek.
I'd like to pull the Planning Commission minutes of January 8th.
And I would like to pull the accepting of the donation, Wilmer Area Senior Citizens Club. With that...
I'd also like to pull item number F, appointment.
Okay. Well...
Anything left?
We've got a few things we can approve. All in favor of approving those that haven't been polled, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose that passes. Councilmember Dockin, Rice Memorial Hospital minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, just for information, this is from the financial report, Bill Fincky reviewed the hospital's financial report for the period ending November 30th, 2013, in regard to the following areas. A, Rice generated a loss of $713,000 from operations compared to budgeted operating income of $241,000 and last year's November operating income of $100,000. B, the primary contributing factors for this month's negative results were lower revenues and volumes as well as lower reimbursement. C, the lower reimbursement was due to a continued shift in payer mix and declining reimbursement rates within the government payers due to lower case mix acuity. D, operating expenses were lower but not enough to offset the decrease in revenues. E, care center activity generated operating income of $53,000 positive compared to an expected operating income of $36,000 and last year's operating income of $54,000. Item F was home medical activity generated an operating loss of $90,000 compared to a budgeted operating loss of $19,000 and last year's operating loss of $78,000. G, the hospital's 2013 bond issue was able to close, be completed on December 31st. And just again, that's for information only, and I would move that we add these to our consent.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that passes. Councilmember DeBleek?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem, just wanted to point out, item number six, the Wilmer Municipal Utilities acquisition of property was approved by the Planning Commission, they're acquiring property just to the west of here, commonly known as Jerry's Liquor Store, it's part of their long-range plan for the utilities as far as their expansion needs. That property came available this last fall, the utilities acquired it under that plan, they're going to continue to use it as, I think, some office space and the rental apartments that are currently there, so for the time being until they are completed with their long-range plan, so that was just for information, so that motion to flu these minutes.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose that passes. I just want to give a little bit of a shout-out to the Senior Citizens Club, the community center, they have just recently refurbished and refurnished the woodworking shop, a lot of new equipment out there, they had an open house last week, and they have really done a nice job, and the Senior Citizens Club contributed about, close to $1,900 toward the purchase of some of the equipment, so I would just say those that are interested should go out there, there is a fee, and today they had their first class out there, five people, and as I understand it, everybody has all their fingers, so it was a job well-done, so I would say good job on that, with that, I would move acceptance of that donation.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes. Councilmember Ammon?
Oh, item number F, Merrill appointment, his own appeals board, the mayor is on vacation, I guess that's why he's not here, but I did have a chance to talk to him, and he didn't, usually, I believe, in the city charter, the appointments, all appointments to boards and commissions come through, according to the city charter, are recommended by the mayor and approved by the council, in this particular case, he hasn't seen this, nor did he recommend this approval, and after looking at it, he says that, what prompted you to make applications for a citizens committee, and it says it was requested by staff?
We have in the pen...
Who on staff is recommending a person to the committee and not bringing it to...
The recommendation was to the mayor, I didn't realize the mayor had not seen it, so we can simply remove it until he's had an opportunity to look at it, but in the past, staff has provided names to the mayor, and in this case, I just didn't realize it had not gone to him, that was an error on my part.
Okay.
That's not a problem, we'll just...
Well, in this case, I think it should be table until...
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm moving to table, item number F, please.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 That passes, well, that got us through the consent agenda. We're moving now to Community Ed and Recreation, recreational organizational study and recommendations. Dr. Warner? Steve, would you like to maybe give us a little preview, and you're attached to your something there, it's following you.
Not perfect. Almost.
Mayor Protem, members of the council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce Roger Warner. This past fall, the school district and community education and recreation in the city of Wilmer decided to go under organizational study for community education and recreation, and we hired the firm of Warner and Associates, and specifically Roger Warner, to do this work for us, so tonight, he's here to present his findings, he's got a PowerPoint presentation, all of you have in your documents, his organizational study report, we've presented this information to the school board previously, and to the Joint Powers Board, and with that, I'll introduce Roger, he comes to us with a plethora of experiences related to mostly school and organizational studies of school districts, he's a retired superintendent, and has been in this type of work for, I won't age him, so I'll just leave it at that, so with that, Roger Warner. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much, Steve, Mr. Chairperson, members of the council, members of the administrative staff, members of the viewing audience, I'm delighted to be here and on a blustery evening, it's so nice to be inside rather than outside, to share with you, as Steve said, some remarks about an extensive study of Wilmer's very impressive community education and recreation program. The study was initiated this past summer, in the early stages of August, and was completed in mid to late November, and resulted in the preparation of a study document that's about 47 or 48 pages long. There are a number of minor conclusions and minor recommendations, not to say insignificant ones, but nonetheless, they did not elevate to the position of things that I wanted to share with the school board and with the city council and their administrations, they're in the document, and as you read through, you'll note, perhaps with some interest, some of the additional conclusions and findings regarding any number of facets of the organization that are not going to be presented here tonight, I want to try to keep my remarks to about 15 minutes or so, if that's okay. As I said, the study started this summer, and it is labeled as an organizational analysis study, and the study purpose, as you can see on the screen, basically focusing on that last sentence, is that the ultimate focus of this organizational analysis study is to enhance the organizations, in this case, both the city and the school districts, cost effectiveness, its effectiveness and its efficiency. There was an interest with the Joint Powers Agreement having been in place for a number of years, I think a decade or so, that there be an examination of not only the community education and recreation program, but also the basic founding document, the Joint Powers Agreement, and an examination of the functioning of the Joint Powers Board, and then from that point on, looking at structurally at the organization. So if we turn to the next document, there were basically three questions that were to be addressed by this study. In the first instance, an examination of the current status of the organization, and that included, as you're going to see a couple of different times where I'll make remarks about it, looking at the organization from a structural point of view, participation levels in the organization, finances, programs and services offered and delivered, facilities and related issues, and then regarding the second question, conclusions drawn about the effectiveness, efficiency and cost effectiveness of the community education and recreation program, and finally, recommendations. Then, looking a step further at the methodology of the study, not belaboring this long, you can study this in greater detail in the study document, there were a lot of interviews that were conducted of people representing the school district, some representing the city of Wilmer, and certainly a large number of members who served on the governing board of the Joint Powers Board. Beyond that, a number of documents, a huge number of documents were gathered, some produced by outside sources such as audit documents in the school district, and a number of them, reports submitted by the Wilmer Community Education and Recreation Program to the state of Minnesota, Minnesota Department of Education and others, as well as internal documents regarding program offerings, participation levels, finances, programs and services and the like, and then with the help of representatives of the staff, there were tours that were made, I think if we flipped to the next one, tours that were made of a large number of the cities and the school district's facilities, and a sampling of the most frequently used and the largest and most robust parks, examination of financial trends, promotional documents that were submitted to the public, the gathering of additional information, and finally culminating in the production of a final report document. The major components of the study were these five, an examination, as I mentioned, of the organization, and what that entails in short order is looking, first of the Joint Powers Agreement, and then looking at the organizational chart, and what were the subordinate, superordinate relationships between the director of Wilmer's Community Education and Recreation Program and the city administrator, and the superintendent of schools, his, meaning Steve's, subordinate staff members, the existence of job descriptions, the conduct and performance evaluations, and a number of other strictly organizational determinations about Roger Warner, looking at this as we would a school district or some other formal organization and saying, are the component parts of this organization in place for it to be able to operate in an effective, efficient and cost-effective manner? Then we took a look at participation levels programmatically over a five-year span of time, any number of reports are prepared by Wilmer Community Education and Recreation Program that go to the state of Minnesota that reflect participation levels in early childhood family education programs, participation by senior citizens and senior programs, participation by youth in youth recreation or youth enrichment programs and adult enrichment programs, where we would be in a position from a data examination point of view to determine, has this program in fact continued to demonstrate, as I can verify to you, very robust participation by the people in the city of Wilmer and surrounding areas in these programs and services? We examined the finances of the organization, and happy to announce to you, as the study does, this is a fiscally well-managed organization, outstandingly well-managed. We examined programs and services, the change in those programs and services over time, the expansion of programs, the withdrawal of programs due to lack of participation, the expansion of programs that were in fact growing, the information that was submitted to the public in, through a myriad of different communication vehicles to entice the public into participation in the community education and recreation programs, all of these things were examined, and I can tell you, as I said to the school board of Wilmer, of the Wilmer Public Schools, that in all of the studies, we have, our firm has done, studies of over 400 school districts, I'm sorry, we've done over 400 studies involving over 1,000 school districts over the course of the last 24 years. Whenever we do the study of a school district, we examine, among other programs, their community education and recreation program, generally it is their community education program, not recreation, which is either nonexistent or it's done by the city. My point in saying this is not to explain to you my wealth of experience, it is to say that I have never seen a more robust program, ever, in any of the studies we've done, including 75% to 80% studies that we've done in metro area school districts, as robust as this program is. I'm not saying that there aren't facets of the program here that are not done bigger and better by somebody else, that would, I'd be hard-pressed to say that the extended-day program here, or the school-age childcare program here was as robust as the Roseville Area Schools and Twin Cities, it's not. But if one takes a look at the wealth of programs that are entwined and overseen by this Joint Powers Agreement between the city's recreation programs, while were the city's recreation programs and community education programs of the school district merged and carried out under this Joint Powers Agreement, this is the most broadly-based expansive program with the greatest number of facilities for a school district this size that I've ever seen. That's a compliment to all of you, it should be. So that's a segue into the fact that we took a look at, as I said earlier, an examination of the facilities, an examination, not that we're doing an inspection, but looking at the programs and services in the various facilities throughout the city of Wilmer. Very quickly moving on and just taking a look at conclusions, the Joint Powers Agreement for the community education and recreation program clearly does not delineate the desired role and/or functions of the Joint Powers Board, it is not a well-crafted, and I'm not saying that the Joint Powers Agreement was not a good agreement, that was a facet of it that was not well-crafted, as a consequence, the Joint Powers Board members, as I interviewed them, do not have in their possession or have access to an explanation of what their true role is, and you can't really extract that or ferret that out of the Joint Powers Agreement, and you're going to see later that that'll be addressed a little bit in the recommendations. The Joint Powers Board members have not participated in strategic planning process that provides some guidance in performing their roles as board members, and the fourth conclusion, the essential organizational components of the community education and recreation program are in place, as I implied earlier, including the employment of a director, a chain of command for supervisory reporting and evaluative purposes, job descriptions, clear and unambiguous role for the responsibilities of the director. The director, Steve, meets on a regular basis with Charlene, meets on a regular basis with Jerry, the respective city administrators and superintendent of schools, gets feedback, he sits on the cabinet with the school superintendent, he receives annually a performance evaluation, and he in turn provides supervision and oversight of subordinate staff members, carries out their evaluations and the like, that's what you look for in a quality organization. And looking at conclusion five, the program has caused to have been established select organizational components, including organizational chart, chain of command, job descriptions, program management, and regular meetings and organization, other organizational features, and I mentioned that the program is robust and has been consistently so over a multi-year time span, you can have an organization that operates on paper very well, and all the right things are being done, but the program doesn't have very much participation, this program has extensive participation. It is a highly collaborative organization, and it operates a highly significant number of facilities and sites on behalf of the school district and the city. Given the high demand for the usage of the facilities and grounds, program staff performs remarkably well in satisfying the facility site interests of the dispensers of program services, courses and activities. My oh my, do you have a lot of parks, my heavens, and I'm just amazed to see the job that is done in terms of making sure this shelter is allocated for this person, and this program is over here, and the array of facilities that you have attending to all needs, although you will see in here a recommendation for facility expansion. Conclusion 11 says that based on feedback, it would appear that there are some needs for greater quality gymnasium and support spaces. I went from six to 11, I did, I did. What, do I have these out of order? Did I miss which one, seven, okay, okay, well, let's take that one since it's up there. Well-managed component, that this is a financially well-managed component, I had made reference to that in the past, just fiscally very, very sound, and that it offers the community education and recreation program a broad, comprehensive array of programs, services and activities that are designed and delivered to preschool-aged, school-aged and adult participants. Okay, getting back on track here, there, in conclusion 11, there is a conclusion that in interviewing large numbers of people and looking at facility usage, there seems to be very substantial need for greater quality gymnasium and support space in the holdings of the community education and recreation and in the city and school districts venue, if you will. There are a number of measures which if implemented would also increase the effectiveness, efficiency and cost-effectiveness of the community education and recreation program, those are cited, they're of a lesser magnitude than the ones that I wanted to bring to your attention here, but are cited within the study. Now, very quickly, several recommendations. The first one is that the Joint Powers Board and its members have a specific role and functions specified for them, and that once that's done, rather than dealing with the Joint Powers Agreement, simply have the school board and the city council approve a role description for what those people are to do. Secondly, that the Joint Powers Board be assigned participatory responsibilities for working with, as they do now, they currently meet with the director and his staff, but specific responsibilities related to strategic planning and providing feedback and needs assessment and evaluation of programs and program publicity. The third recommendation is focused on engaging the Joint Powers Board members in the process of developing a strategic plan, an overarching one for the community education and recreation program, probably one which the director then can bring and present both to the city council and to the school board. The fourth recommendation, that a timetable should be established for regularly conducting needs assessments and evaluations of several programs and services, this does not imply that such evaluations are not done on a, let's say, a more irregular basis, or that they haven't been done in the past, the implication of this recommendation is that in fact, a pattern be established for regular evaluation of various components of the program. Recommendation five suggests that and recommends that the billing process between the city of Wilmer and the Wilmer School District be simplified and standardized, it is a process that, there's a virtually rebilling, billing, 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 and it's time-consuming on both ends, and in fact, the amount of money being paid by the city to the school district over the extended period of time of the Joint Powers Agreement really is not varied substantially, and it could probably be handled in a single payment rather than monthly payments. Recommendation six is that the Joint Powers Agreement be modified to provide reasonable notification to the Wilmer School District if the city of Wilmer were intending to reduce its fiscal commitment to the community education and recreation program, it's not that I think the city council is, but as an independent, third-party, neutral reading the passage inside of the Joint Powers Agreement regarding the fiscal commitment of the city council, it did appear to me, and you have to remember, as a former superintendent of schools, I would be looking at this and saying, so it is possible then, under this Joint Powers Agreement, that the city council could actually reduce its commitment to the school district at mid-year, and by the Joint Powers Agreement, that would be the entirety of the fiscal commitment then to the school district, and that would be a concern of mine. The seventh recommendation involves examining the processes and procedures for training youth supervisors to perform their duties to greater effectiveness, involving the school district coaching staff in orienting and training volunteer coaches to ensure those youth are acquiring background skills necessary to function later in junior varsity and varsity level programs. And finally, in recommendation eight, the Wilmer School District and the city of Wilmer support future endeavors that will result in the provision of additional quality gymnasium and support spaces to support the program. That, Mr. Chairperson, members of the council, members of the administration, viewing audience, unless there are questions, that is the sum and substance of my remarks, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Christian, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you for your report and recognizing that the Community Ed and Rec Department in Wilmer and the school system is running so well, I guess I wasn't surprised, I think most of us know that it's a top-notch program, and we've got an excellent leader here. here for that program. However, in your goings around Wilmer, did you ever consider the, all the church gymnasiums that we have? It seems like almost every church to attract the youth these days is building a huge gym. I mean, we have, I can think of three or four in Wilmer, and the space that's needed, one of your recommendations here, another gym or additional gymnasium, maybe we could look at renting some of those gymnasiums. I don't think they're used seven nights a week. Did you consider that?
Well, I have to, well, I always consider that. I have to admit that I did not do an inspection of the individual churches. In fact, didn't see actually all of the parks in the city either, but didn't see the major ones. Obviously, the limitations in most instances, and I can't speak specifically here, in most instances, of church-owned or other small organization-owned facilities tend not to provide the type of range and range of integrated services that one would hope to have in a facility that was specifically designed for community use. That is to say, you know, full court, full regulated court, the capability of subdividing courts, if you will, adjoining meeting rooms, supply areas, in other words, multi-purpose, multi-use functions. I'm not saying that one shouldn't look at it. I'm saying that I think that particularly in interviewing really a large number of people, this was a major issue in their mind, not one, not that you would imply, not one that I was manufacturing, but in fact, it is a groundswell of the number of people that we were interviewing, so.
Well, you can see from the weather tonight that we need some indoor. I mean, it's, they're well-used and most of the gyms that we have are packed all the time. However, we did just lose two school gymnasiums that we did have, elementary schools, so thus may be the need for gymnasium. But my thought was, we have these church gyms, and if we could somehow use them, it would be a great use of the space. Another question or comment, you mentioned how our Community Ed and Rec is so well-run and better than most that you have looked at, and yet you have eight, nine, 10, 11, or I forget the recommendations on your, how or why would you change something that's working so well?
Now, I want to make sure, and I'm not saying that it isn't well-run, I, the comment that I made was that the Community Education Program here is among the more robust and complex, partly because it is one that has merged programs and services from both the city and a school district. They're very unusual. And I want to say that they don't, other communities don't, but when you start to put into the mix the Robins Island and the parks and the shelters and the aquatics area and the ice arenas and city facilities and school district facilities and the array of programs, you get something that is more complex in its, if you will, level of sophistication than you'll find in a Roseville, because Roseville operates its own recreation programs the city does, and so does, so it isn't as complex. Now, but I don't want to minimize the quality of the program here, but I would say that one would always be, when one's looking at effectiveness, efficiency, and cost effectiveness, you're always looking with an eye to what kinds of things could be done basically to improve the organization's operation, service operation, and in so doing that, you know, I'm probing and telling, as we're interviewing people, and probing and saying, tell me what do you see as the greatest needs? So, just as if I interviewed each one of you and asked you, help me, tell me what are the needs that you think are greatest in the city of Wilmer. You'd be identifying as members of the council, various unsundry things. Ultimately, that doesn't mean that the city of Wilmer is not a great city. It does mean however, that from a strategic planning point of view, we're trying to identify where's the next step out there to make this program, these programs and services even better. I hope that's a good explanation for you.
Somewhat, and I appreciate it again, Roger, you're coming and reporting this. One final comment, and I just, I find it rather interesting that the school district not too long ago decided that we need another school, and then this report says that we need more gymnasium space, and they mentioned that in the school district also. And again, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. But I would say, if I may, in response to that, the school district didn't say we need another gymnasium. The people I interviewed did. They represented members of the Joint Powers Agreement, a wide variety of people, not school, I mean, there were some school people, but not school people exclusively.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? I have, I have one final question, and thank you again for your report, it was very interesting reading. You've come up with the eight recommendations, things that might be done. What kind of a process, or what happens now? How is this going to be analyzed? Who's going to analyze it? Where do we go?
A first starting point, is it Protem Mayor, is that? Okay, I want to make sure I get that right. Mr. Chairperson. One of the first steps, and at least from my vantage point, was an opportunity where your city administrator, the superintendent of schools, the director of Community Education and Recreation Program, and I met this early evening for an hour and 15 minutes to talk about the implications of this. I know that, and some priorities, and there's going to be some further discussion among the three of those people, and I know that Steve, the director, is planning on, there has been a presentation of the Joint Powers Board, and I know that he is planning to undertake a series of steps, including a strategic planning process with the Community Education and Recreation Joint Powers Board. So, the idea is there is and will be planning steps in the process to go forward and make many of these things become hopefully a reality.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Next item on our agenda is the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, there is.
No?
Mr. Unis.
Yep.
Would you state your name and address, please, sir?
Ken Beam, excuse me, 2217 Country Club Drive in Wilmer, and I'm not sure, I didn't look at the agenda, so if the Jennie O Turkey Store expansion, is that on tonight's agenda?
We're going to be setting a hearing tonight later on.
Yeah, and I just wanted to speak in favor of that from representing a longtime business owner and family, and representing the business interest of the Wilmer area community.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. Is there anyone else? Okay, Finance Committee. Oh, that's me. This is a Finance Committee meeting from Monday, January 13th, 2014. First item on our agenda was public comment, and there was no one that wished to address the council. Second item was having to do with some surplus phones. Staff reported to us that after upgrading the city's telephone system last summer, there are surplus phones from the old system that are of minimal value. The Wilmer Public Schools have expressed an interest in acquiring these phones. It was noted that Minnesota Statute 471.64 authorizes the city to gift property to a public school. Following a discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to execute a contract with the Wilmer Public Schools through which the city will provide to the school for no charge up to 40 telephones that are surplus to the city's need. Second. Discussion. Okay, the motion again, so everyone knows, is execute a contract with the Wilmer Public Schools through which the city will provide to the school at no charge up to 40 telephones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The next item was the Country Club Drive capital funding. Staff explained to us that Country Club Drive lift station, which was built in 1987, has required numerous bypasses during rainstorm events resulting in capacity issues. There have been approximately five bypasses reported to the MPCA since 2009. Too many of these bypasses could result in a moratorium on growth in the lift station basin. In 2011 and 12, televising and sump pump inspections have taken place in this area to identify sources of infiltration with limited success. Staff had requested $75,000 for professional services in the 2014 waste treatment plant collection budget, however, only $30,000 was adopted. Staff agreed this project should continue, but $30,000 is not adequate to cover design and engineering services required. Subsequently, an additional $60,000 is being requested for professional services for the Country Club Drive lift station design and engineering budget. It was noted that funds not utilized for the Lakeland Drive project, which will be addressed a little bit later, would be available for this budget increase. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee amending the 2014 wastewater treatment collection capital budget for Phase One Country Club Drive lift station design and engineering by $60,000, and that said funds will be reallocated from the Lakeland Drive project. Second. Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. The approximately five bypasses reported to MPCA since 2009, have those been brought to the council or through Public Works? I mean, I was not aware of that. And shouldn't they be brought through Public Works since it's our infrastructure?
I don't know that we have brought them through the council. I mean, they would occur at the time, and so the staff would just make that decision in the field to make that bypass. And whether the project's been discussed, I mean, since 2009, it probably, I would guess it was probably part of the planning for this project and why this project was put into the capital improvements plan. But I can't, and that's been in the capital improvement plan a couple of years.
Mm-hmm. But I mean, I like to be informed, I think the rest of the council members do too, and I just find it strange that I'm reading it on a Finance Committee minutes and it has not, we haven't been made aware of it. That was it.
Any other questions? Again, the motion is to amend the 2014 wastewater treatment collection budget by $60,000, and the funds will come from the Lakeland Drive project. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rahman.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis. In your request, you know, the Finance Committee is recommending that we take this $60,000 out of the Lakeland Drive project.
That's correct.
And put it into this as you've seen, it's an emergency, I might say, or an uncommon expense that we weren't prepared for, kind of like the Highway 12 improvement project study and the city auditorium and issues like that that come before us from time to time. I don't disagree with that, but I do have to share some concerns that in the last, I'd say the last six months or more, I've seen committee projects that normally have gone through the standard operating, standing committees being bypassed and overlooked or circumvented. In this case, I don't know if it was deliberate or not, in this case, I don't think it is, but I do share Mr. Christensen's sentiments that usually these issues have always come to Public Works, so it's a recommendation for finance to do that. What we're doing in this case is we're recommending the Lakeland Drive project to be diminished, even though we've had public hearings on it, there are public meetings on it, and got a lot of input from individuals, and now we're dealing with a $60,000 issue. It's not a large amount of money. I'm just wondering why we have not, or why we cannot shift the funds around within the city budgets so we can still accomplish the tasks at Lakeland Drive, which I think are badly, badly, badly needed.
Well, I think if, I'll maybe answer that. I think perhaps if the council decides to do the Lakeland Drive project, you know, in its entirety, then that $60,000 isn't going to be available, and it would have to come from somewhere else. I mean, we're not increasing the total budget anywhere, we're just moving money.
I understand that. That's my question, did, whether there were any other recommendations other than taking out of the Lakeland Drive project to cover the cost of the operations of the project that just came up and Lakeland, to review the budget and see if we can reprioritize some of our objectives?
Well, I think we did look at that with the Lakeland project. As we get into, as we get to that agenda item and discuss that, I think the piece with the Lakeland project is the Lakeland project on its own as a street project probably would not have moved forward in our street program by the rating of that project. It was moving forward as a street project due to assumptions we had made on the lift station, the need for an interceptor, and as those, and as the need for an interceptor, it changed, and we weren't necessarily going to tear up the road, we began to look at that Lakeland project, and as the finances changed, we began to look at the Lakeland project differently and look at the street project separate from the lift station, because it's always been the priority on that project, has been the Midwest Lift Station. And so when we looked at this, and this was simply, I would guess I would say this was an error during the budget process, is that, and where the finance director and I made the error, I can't, I'm not sure, but there was $30,000, there was more requested, we did not budget adequately for that, the project needed to go forward, and that's why we're bringing it back to try to allocate those funds for the engineering and design of this and stay on the same schedule.
Thank you, Charlene, I understand your rationale for that. I just am wondering if the Finance Committee could further go back and reestablish some funds for the continuation of the Lakeland Drive project. I think that project is very, very, very necessary for the improvement of our city, and it's been neglected, and the, also the issue of the railroad quiet zones has been a priority of this council even prior to I came, when I came back on, and what we're doing is we're setting back those priorities that have been set and are highly needed and wanted, excuse me, by the public. They're very anxious to see the quiet zones completed. Somehow, we have to establish that task of what the citizens need. In this case, I understand that you're re-proportioning money from one fund to another, and that's fine. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't somehow, I'm requesting that the Finance Committee, when they look back at this in the future, at the next meeting, that they reconsider some way of obtaining that task of Lakeland Drive quiet zone and the improvements as soon as possible.
Okay, we, I think we understand what your request is.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Just a clarification, we were talking about the Country Club Drive, right? At this point in time?
Pardon me?
We're talking about the Country Club Drive that was in the plan, just the change.
That is correct. It's the reallocating the dollars, but they come from the Lakeland project. I mean, that's, okay.
Okay.
Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The next item on our agenda was the building inspections vehicle. Staff reported to us that the building inspections vehicle scheduled for replacement in 2014 has numerous physical and mechanical issues that warrant replacement and has not been driven for several months. Staff is requesting authorization to replace the building inspections vehicle per the vehicle replacement schedule. Quotes have been received well within the budgeted amount of $27,000. Staff is requesting authorization to proceed with the replacement of the building inspection vehicle. Following discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I'll move the recommendation of the committee to authorize the replacement of the building inspections vehicle as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. During our Budget Committee meetings, or our full council budget meetings, I had mentioned the fact that since our city vehicles don't leave the city, they're basically driving in a 30-mile radius, I don't know why we couldn't run them longer. We have a mechanic out at Public Works Garage, or many of them, that can take care of these vehicles, or purchase used vehicles. I know the price is pretty reasonable, $27,000, but what are we replacing? It's just as a vehicle. Is it a truck? How many miles? What year is it?
Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Christensen. The vehicle is being replaced.
The vehicle that's being replaced is a two thousand four Ford XL pickup, four-wheel drive. The plan is to replace it with a two thousand fourteen Ford XL four-wheel drive pickup, pretty bare bones, rubber floor, no frills to the vehicle, just your basic work truck. The old truck has, if I recall correctly, about ninety thousand miles on it. The ABS braking system is completely shot. It's something that's beyond repair by our city mechanics. They do not have the experience and the background in working on the electronic brake systems, is what I've been told. Additionally, the interior is in pretty rough shape, the seats are bad, and there's quite a bit of rust on this vehicle. It, you're right, it doesn't leave town very often, but it's used hard in town, and I think that's a lot harder on the vehicle than it would be if we were putting some highway miles on it. It's, it's a vehicle that is in pretty rough shape. And our plan would be to take pertinent features like the, anything we can use, like a toolbox or mats or anything out of the old vehicle and transfer to the new one. We weren't looking to go out and buy new stuff.
In my business, construction, we run them to about a hundred and eighty thousand miles, and we keep them mechanically safe. And, and most of ours is within thirty miles of Wilmer also. I just wonder, has it ever been discussed by staff as far as maybe looking at a good used vehicle? Or am I going nowhere here? I, I.
That question was asked, and I think.
Yeah, I actually did look for some vehicles, and for that same price, I could find probably a five-year-old pickup, six-year-old pickup with seventy to eighty thousand miles on it.
Okay. Well, I thank you for your answers and for the discussion.
Okay. Any other, any other questions? Okay, the, the question is authorizing the payment for the replacement truck. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Okay. That, that passes. The next item on the agenda was the Lakeland Drive project financing. Staff explained to us that the Midwest lift station Lakeland Drive project's scope of work needs to be amended due to changes in the availability of municipal state aid funds. It was noted that the street projects done in two thousand thirteen utilized a substantial amount of municipal aid state funds, leaving a minimal balance in two thousand fourteen. The city needs to rebuild these funds at, at the state before pursuing extensive further projects using municipal state aid funds. Therefore, it's being recommended that the overlay, trail, and quiet zone portions be eliminated from the Lakeland Drive project. The remaining portion of the project consists of interceptor lift station improvements and is budgeted at two million seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which may be eligible for Minnesota Public Finance Authority funding. Councilmember Nelson asked staff to research the possibility of pursuing construction of the trail this year, yet even if the road is not considered or overlaid, since the trail portion could be funded by the local options sales tax funds. After some discussion, Councilmember Nelson also requested staff provide a report on the status of the local options sales tax funds, and that, incidentally, will be given to us probably in early February. And there was a motion made second and passed, and I would introduce a resolution amending the Midwest lift station Lakeland Drive project's scope by eliminating the overlay, trail, and quiet zone portions, thereby reducing the total budget to two million seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion. This is a roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Armond.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Darkin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes. The next item was annual investment policy review. Staff presented the, the City of Wilmer investment policy to us for our annual review. No changes are being recommended. Discussion included repurchase agreements, collateral, and internal control processes. Staff was asked to provide information on who owns the collateral for the city's investments. That was for information only, and do we have an answer to that question on the collateral?
Well, I could give a three-minute summary of our protections, I guess.
That would be good.
We have about one point nine million dollars in CDs, and as you know, they increased the FDIC insurance to two hundred and fifty thousand. So do we, we never purchase more than two hundred and forty-five thousand in any one institution. Failure to make any mistake of overlapping a bank will never have collateral there. We have forty million plus in federal agencies. We have SIPC protection, Security Investor Protection Corporation, SIPC, that's five hundred thousand dollars. So those investments are not collateralized, and on top of that, they're required to have additional insurance coverage, all the brokerage houses. My last check with Wells Fargo Advisors, one of ours, so forth, they have one billion dollars of extra insurance. The standard phrase from all of them is you'll never collect from that, because the only way they're not going to pay on some of the federal agencies is if the federal government completely breaks down. And if it does, then money's no good, and currency is no good, and so the whole system breaks down. So we really don't have much collateralized at all. We have a little collateral in, in Heritage Bank and some of the other banks that there's a minor amount of collateralized. For Rice Hospital, probably has two hundred and fifty thousand over the FDIC and some stuff, and then we have collateral pledged to us that it's our documents, we can ask for the collateral, they're being held by the institutions. That pretty much is, covers our, our backing of all of our investments.
I think that clears up the questions we had. All right. That was for information only. Looking at future agendas, we noted that we'd be looking at the local option sales tax, the final reports there and on the balances, some preliminary year-end reports, and the Rice Memorial Hospital unaudited year-end reports. There was no old business, and there was no new business, unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
Any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. All right. Moving to the Public Works, Public Safety, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. We did meet January fourteenth on a Tuesday. Item number one was public comment, and nobody was there to speak. Second item had to do with the archery range, considerations for an ordinance. This was for information only. Our police chief led the discussion of developing guidelines for the establishment of outdoor archery ranges. He recommended approval of all proposed indoor ranges, and in the case of outdoor ranges, he suggested a permit application process for council review. The process would educate the applicant of city requirements. Sample application form was reviewed and discussed, and the application included technical specifics, specifications as well as definitions. Committee discussion focused on safety, and there were four main issues. Number one was the appropriate degree of offset for the range. Number two, the appropriate backstop size, backstop meaning what's behind the target. Backstop is not the target, the target is on the ground, the backstop catches any deflected arrows or missed. Number three was the acceptable exposure risk to neighboring properties. And item number four was the types of arrow tips that we would allow. Councilmember DeBleek presented an email from Mr. Dan O'Meara, who had some thoughts regarding range development. We have an attachment there with your minutes. Councilmember Nelson asked if it would be reasonable to require ranges to be fenced backyards. The committee also discussed safety issues at length and ended the discussion by receiving the material for information only. And my thoughts after the meeting were, we on the council, we don't have any archers, and I'm wondering why we should be writing the guidelines, and we should probably get the input from some local archers to help write these rules. It, it kind of reminds me of Washington, D.C., these lawmakers are making laws that they know nothing about, and I think you know what I'm talking about. Item number three had to do with Grass Lake stormwater update, and this was also from information only. Staff presented a memo from Jared Vogel of Bolton &amp; Mink, our interim engineer, regarding impacts of the Grass Lake project on the city's stormwater system. Our staff, Mr. Vogel, met with Mr. Lauren Engelby of Candy High County to discuss the most recent plans for the project. It was acknowledged that the Peach Creek flows were to be diverted in the future, but the city would still have to deal with a tailwater effect due to other flows coming in from the ditch system. Peach Creek is the creek that runs along the highway coming from Candy, Ohio, Minnesota. A lot of water comes through there, and the idea is to divert that into Grass Lake and Coney Road, ditch twenty-three around Grass Lake. In other words, it'd be Birmingham Grass Lake, so that we would, we were told we would lose about thirty percent of the water that comes into ditch twenty-three A. It would be diverted into Grass Lake until sometime it would flow out after the rain, or after the rains are gone. It is anticipated this, the Peach Creek diversion could have a positive impact, but the extent of that impact is not known. Our county plans to hold a public meeting in the spring of this year to discuss the results of modeling that they've been doing incorporating various changes to the project. County staff had mentioned that one possible change to the overall system could be a slight reduction in lake elevation for Lake Wakanda. However, no decision regarding the lake elevation has been made at this time. We were told that there was a possibility that we could reduce the height of Lake Wakanda by six to twelve inches, and that would have a major impact on the flow of water out of Wilmer through ditch twenty-three A, and, and could possibly have a major effect on the backflow of water coming into Wilmer. Again, that was for information only. Item number four had to do with an easement for Mr. Viani. Staff presented an easement agreement between the City of Wilmer and Jim Viani. This easement allows access to his property across a portion of the former wastewater treatment site. The original easement agreement was drafted in two thousand four with a five-year extension granted in two thousand nine. Mr. Viani pays a hundred dollars a year for the privilege of this easement, and after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following. And I will introduce the motion that the city enter into a five-year extension of the Viani agreement, and that the city administrator be authorized to execute the necessary document.
Second, second then.
Okay. It's a motion, seconded, that the city enter into a five-year extension of the Viani agreement, and have the city administrator execute it. Discussion. Councilmember Armond.
Yeah, thank you. We discussed this at some length. There's a couple of thoughts that I've had after, after our meeting, and, and we have discussed, along with the Stormwater Task Force in the past, the elevation of Lake Wakanda, which seems to be the, the, kind of the problem.
Excuse me, we're, we're talking about the Viani easement?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did not, I did not catch that. I was so distracted writing down my notes, I'm out of order.
Yeah.
And you should place me out of order quick.
I want to do that.
Next time you spank me.
All right, let's move on. Any other discussion on this easement? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
At this time, if, if you do have some comments on the Lake Wakanda, I mean, I have, go ahead.
Thank you, and I'm not going to get spanked, I hope. Some requests, and I think the public's pretty, pretty much aware of this also, but during our discussions, we talked about lowering the lake level, Lake Wakanda, which seems to be, by all the reports, the bar report, that, that is probably one of the, if that could be done, if we could wish that upon the citizens of Wilmer, that would be the most, the easiest form of solving our stormwater issues with minimal, minimal impact, in my eyes, without having conclusive evidence to the contrary from the residents of Lake I'm wondering if we shouldn't be looking at requesting a letter be written to the county board and all the necessary appropriate groups, which would include the DNR. To request, just simply request in writing that the, that the area, the lake be lowered twelve inches from its current elevation, I might, you might think that that might be a little redundant, because it can't be done, but I, I'm, I'm a firm believer that by starting the process, you have to have communication. It's been said that we can't, but we have any doc, we have not received any documentation in the last four or five years I've been on the council stating that we cannot. And the reason and rationale, I think, that should be driving our requests to the appropriate groups that control the water level out there is that when this ditch was built back in the nineteen thirties, and it was a shared participation with the city and the county, we, we combined that knowing that we were going to have future, future problems, that we didn't drain the water into, into Lake Wakanda, and it was done. It was good planning. But since that time, we have, we, meaning the people in the area in this county, have added millions of gallons of water to that system, some of it through farmland, and which all impacts this, because we're thirty feet or more lower than the City of Candy High. And I can't help but think that we have, we have grounds to request this only out of the impact that has been given to us by the surrounding area, which, which the county through some form, fashion, or another has not been against us solving our problem. I just think we haven't been collaborating with them enough. And for that long discussion or comment, I, I think we should, we need to take some action on this, to get some positive yes or no's, go down through the systematic process to find out whether or not the residents of Lake Wakanda are going to help solve this problem with us or not. If they are against us to lower the level by twelve feet, what's the, what's the cost, and how are we going to, what's the cost for us to convince them? What's, what process do we go through, through the court system to change that? I don't, I think.
Is that a motion, then?
But.
Is that a motion, or what?
I would like to request that, that, that we, and request from all the parties in the process of lowering Lake Wakanda, to have staff write a letter to request participation in discussions on joint cooperation to solve the stormwater issue in the City of Wilmer.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson has been trying to get my attention here.
Just a clarification in the discussion that we've had with this, the, it is the DNR that needs to be dealt with, with regarding this, correct?
Correct.
And did the information that we have not indicate that the county is trying to work with the DNR? So who, who do, who are we talking about working with here when he's, when he's saying contact them? Because the owners of Lake Wakanda don't have the choice, if I understand correctly.
Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Nelson, you are correct. Ultimately, that decision would rest with the DNR. The DNR has been involved with the county and the Grass Lake project, and the DNR has been involved extensively over the years in all attempts to find stormwater solutions that involve County Ditch Twenty-three and Lake Wakanda. And I know that the idea of lowering the water level in Lake Wakanda is being given some consideration that was brought to us by the county staff that are working on the Grass Lake project. They would not venture a guess as to when a decision might be made or what decision might be made, but they did indicate that these different scenarios would be modeled by bar engineering and would be available to the public at a meeting probably in April. Where that leaves us right now, as far as dealing with the DNR, I can't say, except to say that they have been involved and would continue to be involved in that process, and are well aware that that is a possible solution to our stormwater problems.
So if I might ask, a letter couldn't hurt, then, would it?
I'm not sure the best way to do it. Perhaps a letter in support of county efforts to make the Grass Lake improvements and to improve stormwater impacts on the City of Wilmer may be appropriate.
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Maybe, maybe it would be best if we waited till we got our new city engineer here, pass it on to him. He can give us a fresh, you know, after reviewing the project, he can maybe come up with the right words for that letter, and we could bring it up at the next Public Works, Public Safety meeting to try to formalize that letter a little more than the one or two sentences that was here tonight. But I think our next engineer should be involved in this quite heavily.
That makes sense.
Would you be agreeable to that, or?
Thank you. I agree with everything. I agree with everything everyone's saying. I don't disagree with any comments. I guess I just want to, after all the years sitting here, four years, we know there's a problem. We have the residents who know there's a problem. The county knows there's a problem. DNR knows a problem. Grass Lakes is finally moving forward, but what I'm looking at is the least expensive way to solve the problem for not just now, but in the future, as this community grows, as the county grows, as the area grows, we're going to have the watershed area to deal with. And I know the county's been working very diligent. I really applaud their efforts, all that they've done. But I think that the simple common denominator here would be, if it would be addressed, would finally put this to rest. I've heard the elevation of Lake Wakanga for over 16 years, when I was on the city council prior to this, that issue was discussed, and still nothing has been really resolved. And why do we have to have the DNR control that when we have a growing community? If we're going to -- if it was the Minnesota Vikings that would want that land and we had to lower the water by 12 inches, I bet the legislature would take care of that very quickly. And I'm thinking that we're maybe a little bit too subdued and quiet on our stance on this. I think we need to be more firm, and I agree with the concept.
Okay, so would you be willing to drop your motion?
I'll be willing to drop the motion with the understanding that we will discuss it at Public Works in the future.
Okay. All right. So that takes care of that. Councilmember Nelson, then we're going to get off this.
Yes, thank you.
Just a clarification of if there is anything we should be doing with the county. I know I've asked before, but there's nothing right now that the city can do. It's in the county's hands. Is that not correct? Or is there something we should be doing, working with the county at this point in time?
I do not see a role for the city to play in the Grass Lake project at this time. The city council made it pretty plain a couple of years ago that because we were not going to be recognized for the water quality benefits, that we would not be participating as a local governmental unit. Our continued involvement would be in the area of stormwater, and that's really separate from the Grass Lake project. We'll have to continue to address that as we move forward.
Okay, let's get back on track here.
Item number five was the discussion on the Midwest Lift Station/Lake Land Drive Project change of scope. This will require a resolution. Once again, staff presented information regarding a change in scope for the Midwest Lift Station/Lake Land Drive Project. The project's scope is proposed to be reduced to funding, due to funding issues. There are insufficient state aid funds to complete the roadwork, and a source of funds yet to be identified for our quiet zone. The trail could still be constructed in 2014, but work continues on the final design and financial estimates for that portion of the project. Our staff recommended that the formal scope of the project be reduced to only that portion that would be funded with the PFA loan. That work would include the Midwest Lift Station, the Forest Main, and associated sanitary sewer work. Our committee was in agreement with the reduction in scope and was informed that the finance committee had acted on the funding or financing portion contingent on Public Works, Public Safety Committee concurrence. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded for the pass, and I will introduce a resolution, the first one, that be adopted, that orders the improvements and directs the preparation of final plans and specifications.
Sir, a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion being made, seconded, the resolution be adopted that orders the improvements and directs preparation of final plans and specifications. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The second resolution that I will introduce is, I recommend that a resolution be adopted that approves plans and specifications for the amended scope of services and calls for bids.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Resolution to approve plans and specifications for the amended scope of services and call for bids. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Item six was old business. There was mention that there's still some train horn noise at Trot Avenue Quiet Zone on the west end of Wilmere. A citizen also contacted some council persons regarding the problems with the lighting along the path of Totten Stadium. It seemed like those lights go off around the ballpark, and a lot of people use that bike path, and I want to understand they're going to be addressing that. Is that correct, Steve?
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Christiansen, that is in the 2014 capital improvement plan, so we'll begin working on that once the weather breaks this spring or summer.
Okay, thank you. And I met a citizen, or one of them that has been complaining about the train horn noise at Trot Avenue Southwest, and they said they sat out there Saturday and Sunday, and no horns went off. So, they're working. Item number seven, new business. Councilmember DeBlick asked if the city was aware of any types of hazardous materials that are moving through the rail yard, and if we're aware of the timing of hazardous product movement through the city. Included in this discussion was the related discussion of pipeline safety. Our police chief, Mr. Weifels, informed the committee that the police department and fire department trained for these types of disasters, but there is no specific communication process with Burlington Northern, Santa Fe, or pipeline companies regarding the timing of transportation of product or the type of products that are being moved through our city. We also briefly discussed options for an additional site for prescription drug drop-off. I had a lady call me from the southwest part of Wilmere asking why they can't have a drop-off somewhere downtown, and I was told by our chief that if necessary, and you have some unused or old drugs that needs to be dropped off, you could call the police department, and when somebody's in that neighborhood, they will stop by and pick them up for you. Very handy. We had no other business to come before the committee meeting, so if there are no other comments or questions, I will move to file these minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to file the minutes. Councilmember DeBlick. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just like to go back to item number two. I believe I heard Councilmember Christiansen make a statement that there's nobody at this table that's familiar with archery.
I didn't say familiar with archery. I said, is an archer.
I still take exception to that. Well, I've shot archery in Minnesota, Colorado. I shoot archery as of today, or currently. I just take exception to that statement. Totally noted. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes. Labor Relations Committee, Councilmember Amen.
Thank you. Bruce, can you teach me how to shoot? I love it. I think it'd be a great sport. I'd love to. We met Wednesday, January 15th. There was nobody present in the audience. We had Frank Madden via telephone conference, and Finance Director Steve Opensler, along with our city administrator and our standing committee. Meeting was called or ordered at 4:45. There were no public comments. Item number three was the closed session to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategies. Mr. Anderson made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Christiansen, to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes to discuss labor negotiation strategies. The motion was carried, and the meeting was closed at 4:46, and Labor Attorney Frank Madden joined the closed discussion via telephone conference call. Item number four was the, we reopened the meeting at 5:25, and Finance Director Steve Opensler joined the meeting at that time. Item number five was the Public Works Director/City Engineer Vacancy Position. Ms. Stevens reviewed the advertisement and hiring process for the Public Works Directors/ City Engineers, stating five applicants have been interviewed. Ms. Stevens recommended the hiring of Sean "S.E.A.N." Christiansen, C.H.R.I.S.T.E.N. S.E.N., as Public Works Director/City Engineer effective March 13th, 2014, with a salary of $91,924 plus benefits.
And, Mr. Chairman, there was a question on that benefit cost, and I do have that number. That would be an additional $48,577.
$48,000, how much?
$48,577. You don't need to include that in the motion, but it is, there was a question of clarification at the meeting, so.
I believe that information was requested by Mr. Dawkins. Ms. Stevens also recommended a relocation allowance of $5,000. Following discussion, motion was made and seconded to approve the hiring of Sean Christiansen as Public Works Director/City Engineer at an annual salary of $91,924, and to also approve the relocation allowance of $5,000. The motion carried, and I would move the recommendation to the committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to hire Mr. Christiansen as Public Works City Engineer at a salary of $91,924, and approve a relocation of $5,000. Discussion.
One comment, please.
Yes.
Just for the public's knowledge, she is from Cody, who's coming from Cody, Wyoming.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, that passes.
Item number six was the Clerk/Secretary for Public Works, and Ms. Stevens introduced a request to fill the city clerk position for Public Works, which had recently become vacant due to an internal promotion. Ms. Stevens stated that the position would be posted internally and externally, and Ms. Stevens stated that the job description had been reviewed and updated. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to fill the vacancy position of Public Works Clerk/Secretary, and the motion carried, and I would move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to fill the vacancy of the Public Works Clerk/Secretary. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Item number seven was the Clerk/Typist for the Fire Department. Ms. Stevens also introduced a request to fill the Clerk/Typist position recently vacated due to a career change by the individual who was there for approximately seven years. Ms. Stevens stated that the position is only an eight-tenths full-time equivalent position, but does provide essential support to the Fire Department, and Ms. Stevens also stated that the job description had been reviewed and updated. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded to fill the vacancy of the Clerk/Typist position for the Fire Department, and I would move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to fill the Clerk/Typist position for the Fire Department. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes.
Item number eight was strategic planning. I requested, or presented some concepts for strategic planning, including a potential outline of the process, which is included in the packet. I also stated my thoughts on the importance of strategic planning, and that having input from the council has been very essential, also with staff and constituents to be asked for their input in this process. Mr. Anderson also suggested some topics for strategic planning and some similar suggestions to those that I presented. Those are also attached in the folder. The committee discussed using the committee nights as possible work sessions to venue and discuss the merits of having a facilitator and full-time council participation on or dividing the topics by committee. I encouraged members to look at what other cities had done for strategic planning and reference some models from Salt Lake City, Utah, and Wood, Buffalo, Canada. The committee agreed to have further discussion with the full council, and at this time, Mayor Protem, if there's any comments from the rest of the people that were not part of the committee, we would really value those at this time, as to any thoughts or directions we'd like to go. Briefly, if I may add, which is not part of the minutes, the concept or what we discussed was we would like to involve everybody in the process for short sessions dealing with specific silos or specific topics of importance that we can reach consensus on and break that up into a semi-weekly meeting of the Labor Relations Committee meeting, but have full council participation. So, it would be listed as a public meeting of the full council, not just the Labor Relations Committee meeting. If that would be acceptable to the group, we'd like to have your consensus on that so we can move ahead with the strategic plan. Thank you.
We'd like to hear from maybe the four that weren't at the Labor Committee. Anyone have any thoughts on that? I think what we were really looking for is just a consensus that you want to do some strategic planning, or you don't, or you don't think this is the way to do it, some direction, and then as Councilmember Amen said, we'll kind of work out the details later. Councilmember Nelson.
I'm just, I'm new to the council within the last year, but in some of the documentation that I've gone through, back in April of 2011, there was a council planning session, and the mission statement has been in the cover of the book and the goals and priorities in the cover of our book until we stopped getting the paper at the end of the year. But, just a question, there were some pretty good goals and priorities listed in here along with the mission statement, and I'd just like to go through them. One was leadership, successful integration of the new city administrator. Number two was efficient and effective services. Number three was infrastructure, efficient investments in transportation facilities and technology. Number four was connections, strong public partnership, engaged community, and confidence in city government. And number five was development, a thriving, dynamic regional center. And before we had our retreat, I also asked, because I had been told there was a work session that was done in 2012, and there is documentation regarding that, and so I'm just curious, because this information has been out there, and while I very strongly believe in strategic planning, I guess the question I have is, how have we been working on the goals and priorities that were established in 2011 and 2012? And to me, they're pretty good ones, and maybe we need to be reviewing the information that was done by this group in the past, and to see how staff and how the council have been working together to accomplish these goals and priorities. And so, instead of trying to go back and finding a way to work together, I think this council needs to work as a group, not as committees. I think there is a lot of information that could be shared, Mr. Anderson's requests with certain topics and things that are priorities in a community, but I would put a request in that we review what we already have, and maybe try to work on those items versus trying to go back and starting over. And I did ask Ms. Stevens information regarding this, and I don't know if she cares to make a comment about how the staff has been working on goals and priorities from the information that they have received from the council in the past.
I don't know that I'm prepared to do that this evening, but we could certainly, as staff, kind of look back at some of those goals. I mean, certainly, we've worked on some of those, such as, you know, thriving, dynamic center. I think the downtown plan was an effort to move that goal forward. Investments in infrastructure, our five-year CIP is an effort to move that forward, just, you know, just to hit a couple of them. But if you want something more in-depth, I think we could certainly prepare something and kind of where we are with some of those goals. But we have tried to, staff has tried to use those.
Anyone else?
Well, just quickly, I think you're right on the same track that Dennis and I were, to review what we have in our strategic plan, right near our last planning sessions, but to review those and update them. One of the primary focuses that we should be dealing with is the 2040 plan that's been approved by our community, and we need to somehow incorporate the concepts of what we're going to do with that, and prioritize those, and put them into a budgetary form so we know where the monetary costs are and how we're going to be taking care of reaching those goals. That formulation of the finance issue is somewhat of a long-term capital improvement process, and also the commitment that this council, and for the future councils, just lay the direction on what we're going to do and what we feel are priorities based on the response we get from the community and the people that we know who elected us. So, it's really important, and I think we can do this. I thank you for your confidence, Audrey, on moving ahead of it. We value everybody's input, and I think what we'll do is bring this back to committee and review what we have, and we will break it down into, I would like to break it down into smaller sessions so that everybody has time to digest what's a topic we're going to be discussing in their free time within the two-week period, and then come to that meeting with some written feelings and thoughts that they have on dealing with that issue.
Okay, I'm wondering if... Okay, I'm wondering if anyone else has, Councilmember Dawkins, excuse me. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. In addition, Steve, I think we need to somehow run or work in the Home Rule Charter requirements into this process also, because that's the citizens' constitution for the city of Wilmer. It's important that that also be reflected in this, the Home Rule Charter.
Okay. Councilmember Dubleek.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Temp. I was just going to mention, I think, you know, reviewing and doing strategic planning is a very important part of our job, but, and I think you're absolutely correct her in the right track with this, Councilmember Amen, but also, we have, you know, you mentioned that we've got the visioning 2040 process that is taking place in the community right now, and I think we all need to be involved with that as well.
Thank you.
One more comment, then move.
I would like to request that this group meet as a whole versus dividing up into committees so that we don't, aren't doing a repeat. We seem to work at committees, and then when we come back together, we have to repeat everything we did at the committee. So I would request versus going back to Labor that we find a way to work this as the whole entire council.
I think the intent was to come up with a plan and see how the council felt, and we'd discuss it then, with the whole council. We'll come up with, the committee will come up with a plan, how we think we can do it, and then we can talk about it, just like we're talking about this now. And if it doesn't, if we don't like that, then we'll change it.
Yeah. I believe you're right, and it may be misunderstood, but my intent was to get the information and your input here tonight, and then go back to the committee and formulate it so we have, so when we meet for our first time, at least we have some kind of a format to move ahead with. And we're going to definitely change and revise that format based on the input from the people that are present, and not only the committee members, but the entire city council and staff. Because if I might just repeat what I said at some of the, at the committee, I think it's really important in this process that we involve staff to help us with the financial aspect of it, how the goals that we want to accomplish are going to be impacted. Also, further on the agenda, we're talking about priorities, how we're going to review this, and how we're going to make sure that the plans are implemented. I brought this up several times at the previous Labor Relations Committee meetings, and we need to monitor it on a quarterly, semi-annually, and obviously on an annual basis of where we are at this point, what objective were we trying to accomplish, and how we're going to accomplish it, who's responsible, who has not been getting the job done, who has been, and what we need, whether it be more additional finances to accomplish those goals that the city and the community need. So I think we're in the right direction, it's just a matter of having everybody go ahead with the meeting.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question, are we talking about bringing someone in to facilitate these pieces? I guess strategic planning that I've seen.
With that, we didn't get to that point. I mean, it was mentioned, we don't, Steve, I don't mean to speak for you.
No, go right ahead.
She's looking at me.
We were there at the meeting.
We didn't come to any conclusion on that. That will be coming forward, you know, with the next step. First of things, we wanted to find out if there was an appetite for it. We'll give details.
Again, I would ask that we review what's done in the past before we try to do something again.
Okay. I think that's enough on that subject. Steve? Councilmember Amen?
I just want to add that if any people want to talk about it later, you can call the other council person and discuss it, make sure we have the ideas or talk to Charlene. I'm sure we'll, we can get the information prior to that meeting. The other item, item number nine was, I asked if the city billing inspection program of the county was still working effectively, and Ms. Stevens stated that it was. That's where we're using our billing inspections department to assist the county in the planning, plan review process during, through the permitting process. I also recommended the Finance Committee to look at how community funding requests are handled as part of the budgeting process for 2014. It was a thought at this time, and just to expand on that, the concept was, rather than having the requests that are coming in that are nonessential government operations, whether the Design Center, the Arts and Humanities Councils, or the Multicultural Center, that some of these, some of these funding sources may not be only the objective of the city of Wilmer, but the entire as a whole, and that maybe it could be requested, some of these requests go to the Wilmer Foundation, rather than through the political process of yeas and nays, and they might be able to review or help us assist financially with objectives that they wanted us to help them finance. Also, I asked about language for training for city staff. Ms. Stevens stated that the departments work with training budgets, and the city is making an effort to recruit multilingual staff, people. You know, probably include the city council in that also. Also, there's one item that was not, I'd like to add to the, that's not in your, in front of the night, is the discussion, I asked how the projects in our community come to be, and how the council should be briefed on the projects prior to public awareness and announcements by staff, and how the information should be shared with non-public, whether or not it should be shared with non-public.
Okay, Councilmember Amen, I wonder if that would be better? That wasn't a Labor thing. I wonder if you should bring that maybe up under old business or something, because I don't think we talked about that at Labor.
Yes.
Did we?
Yeah, yes, we did.
Okay, I'm sorry, then go ahead.
So I'd like to add that to the minutes, and that was the format, and the intent of the policy is to be informed. And it's an issue that will, that I believe, you know, the informed elected body, you know, we need to be informed of these issues. And my primary reason for this, and I wasn't aware of it until I talked to the mayor here a couple days ago, that he was not aware of any of the, one of the largest projects, a great project that's coming to our community, and a lot of the people in the council had no knowledge of it, yet I was contacted by other people who are non-elected officials who seemed to have all the information. That isn't right. We as a group, as a council, need to lead this community, and we need to be informed. How that came to be, I'm not sure, but we need to nip this in the bud and get it down to the elected officials being involved in the process, and I just wanted to add that to the minutes. Kevin, I'll get a condensed, a condensed version of that over to you after the meeting.
Is it another item, another business, number nine, that was just omitted?
Oh, hold on, I got to turn this thing back. Yeah, that was another item that was discussed, and it's on the audio if you want to review it. And with that, I move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp.
Second.
Discussion. We have a motion to file the minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. All right, Community Development, meeting Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. Community Development met Thursday, January 16, 4:45. Item number one was public comment. No one was there to speak. Item number two, vacation of portion of former Highway 40. Staff presented an expansion proposal by Jennie O. Turkey Store and described how their expansion plans conflict with the right-of-way of former Highway 40, now Industrial Boulevard. A request had been made that the city vacate that portion of former Highway 40 right-of-way from Wilmer Avenue West to County Road 5. A map showing the proposal for vacation was reviewed and discussed. The attachment A. Steve Rehnquist, EDC Director, presented a summary of the proposed Jennie O. Turkey Store expansion projects. That was in attachment B. Following a discussion, a motion was made and seconded that a resolution be adopted setting a public hearing for February 3, 2014. And I'll introduce that.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, set a public hearing on that subject for February 3, 2014. Before we have any discussion on that, I want to make a disclosure and ask our city attorney a question. It's, you've probably all heard this before, but I am a retired Hormel employee. Hormel owns Jennie O. Turkey Store. I've been retired for five years. I don't believe I have a conflict of interest, but I would like to hear the city attorney's impression.
Mr. Mayor Pro Temp, simply by being a former employee of Hormel, that does not create a conflict. The only way there would be a conflict is if you stood to personally benefit financially from any action the council is going to take. I don't understand that to be the case, so I don't.
That is not the case. Okay, I just wanted that clear and declared. All right, discussion on this. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. I tried to ask prior to the meeting that, so that the citizens out there know where this property is. I mean, we have the technology here, it'd be nice if sometime during these minutes, if that could be put up there so that people could actually see what's taking place. I don't believe it was in the paper, the map, or how much property we're talking about. I don't even know, I mean, I'm looking at the attachment here, and I'm not, I'm not quite sure what it's all entails, but I know we do need to vacate that part of County Road 40 for anything to take place. But if we could get that somehow to the public, either in the paper or.
Yeah, I apologize for that. We had it for Community Development, we should have had it this evening, so I apologize for that.
It will be at the public hearing.
Yes, we will have it for the public hearing. This is setting the public hearing, we will have it for the public hearing.
But it would be nice for the public to, you know.
I agree.
Everybody doesn't come to the public hearing, so somehow they could see it.
Mr. Peterson. Oh, he lost his phone. Mr. Peterson.
Yes, I apologize for not having that on a thumb drive for tonight. I knew it was part of the minutes, and once it was in the minutes, I just lost track of it. It will be part of the official notice that is published in the paper. There will be a map that accompanies the legal description. For the viewers, it's simply that portion of Old Highway 40 that is south and west of the intersection with the realigned Wilmer Avenue, all the way out to County State Aid Highway Number 5. It amounts to about five and a half acres.
Mayor Pro Temp.
Councilmember Fagerley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. On the map, it says 2.9, the part south of Wilmer Avenue there, so.
That's correct. That's one part of it. The other parcel is that Outlet B, and that's somewhere in a neighborhood of three-plus acres.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
For people who don't want to wait to see the map, maybe staff could explain how they can get to it on the website, because it is out there under the city agenda, is it not?
Yeah, that is correct. It's on the city of Wilmer website with your, with the agenda for tonight's council packet, and it will be part of the minutes or referenced in the minutes as well, which will redirect them to the website.
Okay, do we know anything else? Okay, we have a resolution to set the public hearing for February 3, 2014. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerley.
Aye.
Dubleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That passes.
Item number three was Holiday Inn Express Open House. I had asked Mr. Peterson after last council meeting if he could check with him and see what the progress was, so that our committee could come out and view it. Lo and behold, they had a open house for last Thursday, so we were invited, and I know councilperson Nelson and Councilman Dubleek were there, saw Charlene go in, but I lost you in there. It was a lot of people.
And I didn't know quickly.
It was a fantastic facility. It's really going to be an upgrade for Wilmer. Pretty impressive. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak about it, but that's just phase one.
Councilmember.
Councilmember Nelson.
We had a convention and visitors bureau today, too, and so Mr. Feis gave an update, too, on, they've started doing some work in the, I think the Roosevelt Room has been taken apart, and he basically walked through, and I think the Best Western, those rooms are partly underway, and the convention center, I think, is scheduled for April, so they are well on their way, and it's looking different out there, and I think it'll be a great, great asset for the community.
I know, I had made a comment after, hopefully when everything's done, we can have a governor's open, a fishing opener, pheasant, deer, whatever.
Good deal.
That would be impressive. Item number four was LifeLink. This is for information only. Staff updated the committee as to discussions between the Airport Commission and LifeLink regarding lease space in the FBO hangar at the Wilmer Municipal Airport. And you can look at the Airport Commission minutes for that discussion. And if there was no further business, I'll move to file the minutes.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Go now to consideration of zoning ordinance, text amendment allowing Brewer taprooms. Mr. Peterson.
Mayor Pro Temp, members of the council, in response to recent city council action in which the Wilmer Municipal Code was amended to allow Brewer taprooms, the Planning Commission has considered the matter and is recommending an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would permit Brewer taprooms in the Central Business District and in general business districts. It's the recommendation of staff that the council introduce the ordinance to make that change to the zoning ordinance, and that a public hearing be conducted on February 3, 2014.
So moved.
Second. Second. So we have a motion and a second to set a public hearing on February 3, further discussion. Roll call.
We don't need it on that one. Different than the Jennie O. project.
Oh, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Text amendment, or consideration of the final plat on the Gesh Acres South Second Edition. Would that be, Bruce?
Mayor Pro Temp, members of the council, the Planning Commission recently considered the final plat of Gesh Acres Second Edition. This is a subdivision at the corner of Fifth Street Southeast and 19th Avenue Southeast, and it's being platted to provide for commercial development. The property is owned by Gesh Properties LLC. There were several conditions of preliminary plat approval that had been met, and the Planning Commission approved the final plat. It's the recommendation of staff that the council adopt the final plat of Gesh Acres Second Edition.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve that. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Is there any old business? Under new business, Councilmember Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. We have just made a monumental decision on the hearing on Jennie O. property, which is going to have an impact on each and every one of us in this community for many, many years to come. I believe it's going to be a positive impact on the committee, and I hope that it will be for the benefit of everyone, not just a few. I alluded earlier in my minutes of the Labor Relations Committee meeting my thoughts on the involvement of the city council to have knowledge of monumental projects coming to our community. The issue that really struck me very, very, in a negative tone, was that the mayor of Wilmer and a lot of the people on the city council had no knowledge whatsoever of this project coming down the pipe. And I hope the public is aware of this, because it's not the way government should be run. It's not to, government should be entrusted to have the elected officials informed of the officials and of the decisions involved in the process, not to control the process, but be involved in the process. And I think in this particular case, I hate to be, bring this up in a negative tone, but I think there has to be a policy decision made by this council so that this doesn't happen again. It's not that we don't want to be, again, controlling, or I don't want to be controlling yet, but I believe since we have been given the direction to make a right path for the future of this community, we should be. the future of this community, we should be involved in the process and in the negotiation, which is going to have a dramatic impact on our county, our school system, and our infrastructure. Furthermore, Mr. Mayor Protam, I think it's important, but the motion that I'd like to make, and I want to say this in a fashion that I'm not assured that it's going to be supported 100% or not, but I needed to express it because of my frustration at what's been going on in this community, a division that's been taking place between the business and the city council called dysfunction. I believe the dysfunction lies in many different aspects, and it can be pointed at many different people, not only in this room, but in the public. My motion tonight, Mr. Mayor Protam, is to form a negotiation team of city elected officials consisting of chairman or councilpeople from four standing committees for discussion of the Jennie-O project.
I'll second that for discussion.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'd just like to ask the staff for clarification. I'm not sure what it was that we should have known about this project before. It just came to the point of asking for, to start to talk about land. There's a sense that we didn't know something, but I guess I'm just wondering what I'd like to hear from the staff about what's the process.
I'm going to call on Mr. Renquist, because I think that might, if you're prepared.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'm always prepared. This project goes back nearly six years, to when Jennie-O took their new plant to Pelican Rapids. We started with a potential vacation of Highway 40. We didn't have the wastewater treatment facility done. We ended up losing a plant to another city that could have been here. This led to ongoing and continuing conversations with the people from Jennie-O. Needless to say, these conversations have went on some time, and the company officials wanted to be sure that they were in a solid position with the city and with their own board prior to moving forward. Now, on January 15, I believe it was, we received a letter from the city giving us formal authorization to move forward. I think it was on January 16 that we went to the Community Development Committee. Would have been hard to have been much faster than this. Now, I personally briefed three of the council members on the project that we talked about, sometimes extensively, and offered them the complete explanation of the project. At that point, from two different people in the room tonight, I was advised that I might be doing a serial violation of open meeting law. And so, which point, with just barely less than half of the council members, I decided to stop what my original intent was going to be of briefing every one of the council members because of violation of open meeting law and past requests from council members that we have a very open and public process. So what we did is we approached the council at the, at the Community Development Committee meeting. We have several months now to complete this process, so there would have been absolutely no non-disclosure to any council members, trying to be as open and as complete to the public as we can be when we had the opportunity for open public meeting. That was addressed. So, and several times, actually at EDC meetings, we've talked about the project in terms of its potential rather than being an actual project, because the company wanted to have absolute security on the project until it was, until they, as a corporation, had decided to make the next step and go ahead. So I would, my request would be is how could we, say at the DC level or working with city staff, how could we, without violating open public meeting, and how could we, without violating our request to be as open and public with all our actions as possible? My request would be, how could this have been done differently? So I will, I'm stand ready to receive your advice, your recommendations, and if need be, your, your suggestions that, that this could have been done, could have been done a much better way.
Thank you. I, I think that, I understand your concern, but I, I think when we're dealing with economic development, big projects, we're putting people in an awkward position if they have to always be telling us everything that's going on. These things are delicate. So I, I agree. I don't know how else you could have done it without violating the open meeting law, and you were cautioned on that. So I don't have a better suggestion. I mean, I think we should be happy that it's happening.
There's no doubt. I'm excited, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve. Prior to a project, to reinforce my reasons to having a support of a motion in this fashion, is not to point fingers at anyone, Steve, not any individual, or to cast blame. This is simply a matter of understanding so the elected body knows what's going on. Prior to a project this magnitude, there are a lot of different issues that are going to be impacted, and I alluded to some of those previously, but how much, you know, how much are we giving away? What's the value of the land? All those things might come up in future discussions systematically planned and also prepared and put in front of us to make a decision within two weeks, but we're not involved in the process. In the process of negotiating, Steve, I was one of those individuals who you did brief on, and it was a letter dated November 14, 2013, from Jennie-O Foods to Mr. Peterson. It alludes to all kinds of facets that are going to involve public funds and decisions that we're going to have to make. That's not the responsibility of the employees that are hired by the taxpayers to make those decisions and to form or put together in some format and respond to the requests from Jennie-O Foods, which are all alluded to in this paper, of what they want. This is negotiations on a serious magnitude. And again, I support this, I support the concept of this project. I am, I don't know what we'd do as far as our tax base, what we would do without Jennie-O Foods here. We need them to be part of our community, and I don't think they have any other place to go either. You know, we, we've helped them all the way through the process of extending our wastewater treatment plant and making improvements so that we can handle their future load. We have worked with those people very well, and I want that continuation or that kind of continued format. But in this particular case, this had to be discussed. The items that are under had to be discussed, and they are dealing with millions of dollars. And negotiation takes place sometimes behind closed doors. I know we're limited in what we can do as an elected body of eight, because we have, we have to have a quorum, and you have to go through that process, Stephen. I understand that. And in a way, it's kind of bothersome. If we were Board of Directors of Jennie-O negotiating with, let's say, a chicken poultry division, it would be handled in a different way, but I'm sure one thing would be done. We'd all put our issues on the table before we started and brought it public and got the energy behind it. We don't have the energy behind it. My emphasis for this is, if we, the elected officials, were more involved in the process and informed of this, we could also support the project, rather than come out as being negative, as being positive and getting the whole community behind it, because they are going to also participate in, in, in the adventure that Jennie-O is going to have on our community.
Do you have a comment?
Just very quickly, Mayor Protam, members of the council and Councilman Brahman, is I, I think we're probably closer together on this than, than further apart. We both support the city and we support the project. The question might be, when is the right time for staff to bring this to the, to the council? And I, I, I hear rather clearly that you're feeling that it should have been prior to this, and I'll, I'll reiterate, the question is, I, I don't necessarily know how we could have brought it much sooner than this, waiting for company permission. Now, I will, I will agree, there was considerable conversations that went on at staff level, but just as the CEO locally of Jennie-O went to the Hormel Board and got permission before he could go ahead and tell us to, to bring it to the public, is, and it was primarily Bruce and myself, we're not empowered to make any, any decisions. We're not empowered to spend other than a few bucks of city staff or an EDC staff money of any, of any substantial money. We, I think we would, we would tell you that we believed that we had, we had initiated the process the day after we were given absolute permission to proceed, so the only question would have been timing. And we had every intention to fully, now that it's out in the public and it's been in the paper, to brief every council member up to whatever, and of course, knowing me, probably more than they want to know. And so I, I think maybe it was more timing, but I, we would, we work for the council, and of course, in EDC, we work for the county as well, but we want to respect that.
I think also, Councilmember, if I may add, I think the representation staff made, you know, the discussions that staff have had or conversations with Jennie-O have been interpreting council policies such as the business subsidy agreement and how that would apply in this case.
Yeah, you're talking about the land buydown?
Well, you know, they've had questions, and as, as Mr. Renquist has stated, you know, in his recommend, you know, in his information is, you know, how that might apply to Jennie-O, how that policy that the council has for business subsidy or TIFs, how that might be used by the company. It hasn't given them, you know, those decisions have to be made by council, but the staff have, have given Jennie-O some guidance on how those, how those policies could, could be used, or the council might use those policies in this case.
Councilmember Christiansen has a question.
Question for Mr. Renquist, if I may. You, you heard Steve's motion, and I seconded it for discussion. I'm curious as to your, what are your thoughts on his motion, having, was it four council members be part of the negotiating team? Could you explain that?
Well, after reconsideration, it can only be three, otherwise it would be in violation of open meeting law.
What are your thoughts of having three council members be part of the team that's working through this process? Is that good, bad, or otherwise?
The, the more city council staff interconnection, working together, can only be for the good of the city. I would be most supportive of, of that. I, I have my own EDC board that I must work with as well, of course, but I would be most supportive of it.
Well, maybe it could be the three on the EDC.
Well?
I mean, we're, we're part of that, but thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
That was going to be my question. I believe the letter that Mr. Amen, Councilmember Amen, is referring to was a letter he received as being on the EDC as a representative of the city council. Would that be correct?
I haven't looked at this particular letter. I, I supply EDC members with some information, but in this particular case, I probably honored company wishes and held off saying very much at all until just recently.
So we already, the city council already has representation by having three people on the EDC board, so I'm, I'm, I'm still at a loss as to, as to what we're really questioning here, I guess.
Thank you. Ms. Nelson, the EDC board meets every three months, and this topic, I've been on for a little over a year now, has never been discussed with the EDC board. The EDC board represents the county in general for the betterment of the community, and we are part of that. And I guess the primary, what the financial impact of this project and the expenses that are going to have to be incurred are going to be shared by whom? Not, not the county, but the city residents and the investments we put into the industrial park land, which is a proactive thing, and I support that. I, I wish that could be filled up immediately, the whole industrial park. But if, if you'd like to read the letter later on, we can discuss this further. We can kill the motion, we can do whatever we want, but the main thing is, I think we need as a group to finally understand as a team, as a team of city residents and of county residents and of city elected and county elected officials who are ultimately responsible for making these tough decisions, need the input of all these people and staffs. We're not quite all working together and part of the same chain. It seems to be divided here. What I, what I'd like to see is more unity, so when a project of this magnitude comes up, there shouldn't be any doubt or question as the positives of a, of a project like this. But right now, I can look at this and I dissect it and say that there's been a lot of negotiating that's already been put together to even bring it to this point that we have no knowledge of that are going to impact us, giving away a million dollars worth of land. Why? All these questions we have to now backpedal on, and I might want to allude to the previous meetings we've had, whether it be the Lakeland Hotel or the Torgas Properties. I have, I've taken a, maybe in some people's tone, a negative, anti-business role, and believe me, I'm not. What I'm trying to do is get the public involved and have the public, which means the elected officials, part of the process, and have the due diligence from the elected and the appointed and the paid staff people that we have to give us the information to make intelligent, good decisions for our community. In this case, nothing is being presented, and we have to backpedal now and support every one of these projects or this particular project, and we have to explain it to our constituents, and we don't have the information. It'd be much easier if we could circumvent all the negative and have, have a positive impact when we come to meet like this. And I guess I'm going to allude back to this letter. When I read this letter, it looks like there's a lot of requests that are coming from Jennie-O Foods directly from their Board of Directors. Then I'm, I'm really quite appalled. I'm really quite appalled that we weren't advised, the mayor of the City of Wilmer wasn't even informed of this, that this process and all these requests were being made, and now we're asked to vacate a road. It's pretty much saying, hey, we're on board, we're with you, whatever you want, we're going to give you. And it's like, no, this is negotiation, this is business, and it's not personal, it's just business, and we're not part of the process. I'll be quiet.
Okay. You know, and I, I think I have a suggestion. Maybe to take the, the cloud off from the Jennie-O project as opposed to a process. Maybe, maybe we could withdraw this and work on that in the future, because I don't, I don't want to muddy the waters on that.
No, I don't.
On this.
No.
So how would, how would you feel about withdrawing the motion and working it up through committee?
I'll withdraw my second, with the understanding we'll kind of chew on this thing and then maybe work it out at the hearing.
Can I respond to you?
Yes.
My response is that this issue was brought up at Labor Relations Committee meeting. That was not part of the minutes that I amended here previously. The response from, from one of the city staff people there was that I don't think it's a good idea. That's unacceptable. That means we have a problem here, folks. It's a chain of command, who's in control, who's the elected body, who's not, who's not communicating? And you know what? It really tears me up that we're at this point even discussing it, and I thought about this for a long time, and I, and I don't want to come across as being a negative person, but I don't think this process that we're talking about is, is right in this case, and we need to improve on it. If we can improve on it, we have to somehow bring it public and get the public involved, and I, I hate to even bring it up, because again, I'm so joyful of the fact that Jennie-O is going to bring more jobs to this community. I'm, I'm very, very excited. So you're right, it isn't Jennie-O, it's the process of future projects that we have in our community also.
So are you comfortable withdrawing your motion?
I'm, I'm comfortable withdrawing the motion. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciate your patience, everybody, for listening to me.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
I don't mind at all.
Do we have time? I guess I'm, you know, have some concerns about how we got here, but I think right now, we all know where we're at, and I think looking forward... now, we all know where we're at, and I think looking forward, I'd like to, you know, see some timelines and of some of the steps that are anticipated as much in advance as we can, so that we have more time to consider it. I guess my one concern would be to get caught without enough time to look at something. And I don't believe that providing like a timeline and some additional information on what, what's the long-range plan here, the end result, and the steps to get there would violate the open meeting law, providing that to the council, either through staff or other means, but it's strictly factual material. I don't think it would violate the open meeting law. I'm getting an affirmative nod from our councils, so thank you.
That's all we have.
Okay. All right, would you respond, please, Mr. Scott?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, Protem, members of the council, there's no open meeting law issue with anyone, whether it be staff or Mr. Renquist, providing information to the full council.
Okay, all right. We're done?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Go ahead.
Just a clarification. This was the, what we're, the action we took is the first step to get this started, is it not correct?
Mr. Mayor Protem, Councilmember Nelson, this is the first of many steps, and it is true that the, the timing is perhaps a little more compressed than any of us may have liked, knowing that we'd probably like to get the project started when the frost is out and only nine months from now, but the, the staff felt a, staff is hired by and works at the pleasure of the city council and the city, the citizens of Wilmer, in my case, of the whole county. But we also have to respect the wishes and desires of the private and sometimes very private companies we work with. And so we felt we were really kind of in a, between the proverbial rock and hard spot in this particular case, and I don't disagree with anything that's been said. I do stand by that, I just don't know how we could have handled it much differently at that time, and nothing's been agreed to, no land's been given away. There's been some attempts at interpreting council policy and potential actions, but nothing, we're not empowered to make any agreements. It's all before us, and it all begins, it all began January 15th, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move. Is there any other new business, Councilmember?
I just remembered one, yes. The EDC annual meeting is day after tomorrow, Thursday, and as Mr. Aman stated, we meet four times a year. I will be gone Thursday, and I was trying to look for a policy on whether or not a councilperson could sit in for me, and so I'm asking the council if, Council, or Councilman Johnson could sit in for me at that meeting, since there's three from the city and three from the county. Is there a policy? I couldn't find one.
I, I asked that question of the county, because you know, in a lot of cases, the county has substitutes that go, for the EDC, there can be no substitutes as far as the county is concerned, and they referenced our joint powers agreement. So I guess we're going to have to ask.
I couldn't find it in the agreement.
Well, I'm just telling you what I was, what I was told, because I know Mr. Madsen isn't going to be there, and I asked, you know, does your replacement come, and he said, we can't do that, so we'll have to research that.
We can ask the city attorney to also look at the joint powers agreement, and we didn't anticipate the question tonight, so we're not prepared with an answer tonight.
Once again, we only meet four times a year, the combined board, and we sit in for each other in other committee meetings if somebody's gone, and we have voting rights on it, and that's why I'm asking the council.
If I may.
Yes.
I can speak to this without referencing any specific provisions of the agreement itself. The fact is, the EDC is a separate, it's a joint powers board, it's essentially a separate political subdivision, so it's not like having a council member substitute for someone on one of your subordinate committees. This would be actually putting someone into a policymaking role on a board that they're not appointed to, so I think that's probably the reason.
Okay, but shouldn't that be in writing somewhere? I mean, we can't say, I heard, or someone told me, I mean, I couldn't find it. I looked, and I, there's nothing in writing, and that's why I'm asking the council.
I guess we can say, subject to review by Mr. Renquist and whoever he assigns, we'll get back to you before Thursday. And when you, when you get a response, will you write to everybody?
Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council, is anybody else tired of hearing from Steve Renquist tonight? Our joint powers agreement is silent on this issue. It just doesn't address it. It should. It seems to me the city's got three votes and the county's got three votes, and if they're a designated city council member or county commissioner, they ought to be able to vote. But the joint powers is silent, and I think we're going to have to ask that a amendment or revision to the joint powers, because that's how it ought to be.
So.
So what do we say?
What do we do? Mr. Scott?
Though I did not research this issue before today, I am generally familiar with how these boards work, EDAs for cities, and in this case, your joint EDC. I don't believe that this is a situation where you can have substitutes, because the individuals appointed, essentially, they've taken on a separate role on a separate policymaking board, it's a distinct political subdivision, short of someone vacating their seat on that board and then reappointing or appointing a replacement. I don't think there's any way for either the city council or the county board to have substitute members attend if one of their appointees can't make it.
But it's not in writing.
It's just a matter of how local units of government and political subdivisions operate within the state. It's a matter of statute.
I think it will be on the agenda on Thursday, but I think at this point, we're hearing that probably can't do that. I know this, I know the county is not sending a substitute for the one individual that'll be gone. Okay.
So then you'll appoint me as secretary, right?
You'll get some? All right, is there any other new business?
Move to adjourn.
Oh, we got to get some meeting dates.
Okay.
Let's talk about council meeting, meeting dates. Public Works, Public Safety.
We will meet on the 28th, Tuesday.
Okay.
4:45.
Labor?
Two weeks from now, 4:45 Wednesday, I don't have the calendar.
The 29th, next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay. Community Development?
Thursday to 30th, 4:45.
And Finance will meet on Monday, the 27th, at 4:45. Councilmember DeBlick has an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just want to announce that kickoff meetings for Division 2040 goals have been scheduled, and they are as follow. Goal number one, which was attracting and retaining newcomers to the Wilmer Lakes area, is going to be January 24th, that's 2:00 PM at the, at the chamber.
Actually, I'm sorry, that has been changed to the county multipurpose room, that was just late this afternoon, so.
Okay. Goal number two, which is economic diversity, is January 29th, 10:00 AM at the County Health and Human Services Building. Goal number three, which is things to do, is going to be held January 30th, 3:00 PM at the Fire Hall. And goal number four, which is developing leaders, is January 22nd, 10:30 PM at ACMC Auditorium. I guess just encourage everybody to attend those. I know there's various goals that we've all kind of committed to, but meetings are all open, if you can make them, attend.
Okay, thank you. Now, you're going to make the?
Ms. Mayor Protem, I have a question for Mr. DeBlick after a report. I noticed that the county took it upon themselves to appoint a commissioner to every one of those meetings to be on the board. Do you think that would be, to be part of this inclusiveness of the city's plan, that maybe four city council people should be on that board too? I know you're on one, but would that be of interest to the council? Just a question, if we should be in that process, be on that, be on that particular board to make some decisions for our community?
You mean to each, one, each of the four subcommittees?
Or subcommittees.
They're not, just for clarification, they're not boards, they're work groups. I mean, I think the county appointed people to just participate in the work groups.
In the work groups?
Yeah, in the work groups.
Not these meetings, but all the work groups, all the meetings, correct?
The four, there are four, the meetings that Councilmember DeBlick just announced are the start of the four, are the start of work groups along these four goals, and I believe what the county did is, a county commissioner was appointed to attend each one, you know, to attend at least one of those and such, and certainly, if there are council members that are interested in participating and such, but it's a, it would be, I guess it would be, I don't want to say misleading, that's not the right word, but it's, they're not a board per se, I mean, these are, these are community volunteers that have agreed to work on these goals, and I think the county's assigned somebody, you know, again, a commissioner is my understanding, to participate in the process and then just serve as a liaison to information.
So how about, Steve, if we all coordinate with Charlene, which ones we're planning on going on, going to, and then if she sees that one of them doesn't have someone going to it, she can ask for a volunteer? Would that work?
Yeah, that's a good idea, I'm just trying to get involvement of the city council here.
You're certainly welcome to participate in more than one as well.
Sure, sure. If there's going to be four meetings, they're not just going to be these four individual meetings on these four particular subjects, there's going to be many meetings now, they're going to be helped put together to implement the plans that these, these groups have been separated to. This is the Wilmer 2040 Plan. I'm really surprised why we've only had one participant in the discussions of this planning to get to this point already. I think it's, I think we should almost have the mayor appoint four people to that board or get four volunteers from this council to be on those, to be on those committees besides Mr. DeBlick, so we have at least one elected representative on each one of those four committees.
I think if you refresh the process, Councilmember Aman, I'm on the steering committee for the Division 2040 Plan. We had hired a consultant who came out and did presentations, interviewed various people in the community, had various numerous presentations that were given, and she presented. Now, this is the, the goals, work groups, which are kicking off now, are the result of the people that attended those and volunteered to be on various aspects of it. They are work groups that are going to be working on a lot of different issues, and I'm sure there's going to be subcommittees under this, these broad headings as well. So it's not that I'm the only one that's been doing it, yes, I'm on the steering committee. The steering committee is looking at and directing the overall process of 2040.
I don't want to get us all bogged down, I think that was either appointed by the mayor or we did it at our organizational meeting, so we've got our representative, let's all coordinate with Charlene which meeting we're going to go to, and I think the business of the council is done, and I take a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
We are adjourned.
Second.